Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Filkins?
Here.
And at this time, if we could have a motion to approve this evening's agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
No support.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I was just plugging along there.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the floor for public comments. If you would, please come to the podium and write down your name and address for Sandy. And limit your comments to three minutes. And also in this opening comment section, if you would, limit it to things that are on the agenda and not part of the public hearings.
Hello, my name is Captain Mary Williams. I reside on Meyer Street in Cadillac. The present city council vowed to uphold the laws, rules, and codes of the city of Cadillac when they took an oath to office and were sworn in. You are not here to appease one person or any one group. Mrs. Filkins, I address you as such as I truly believe you are sitting in the mayoral chair illegally. In my opinion, you are attempting to have your friend's case dismissed or exonerated as soon as possible, as he has another legal matter and can frown upon his agenda. What next? Is Mr. Homer, our city attorney, being set up to be fired so the good old boys can replace him? Then will we have no more open meetings or government? And will we also not be able to speak in public? How dare you attempt to attend a closed meeting or actually put on a matter that you gave us depositions that supported your friend and defendant? You are playing both ends against the middle, and there is no doubt a direct unquestionable conflict of interest. During your deposition, that's now a matter of public record, you openly contradicted previous statements concerning your witnessing signatures on your position in the last election campaign. And then we had the illegal move that made it appear that the Cadillac Police Department was endorsing your mayoral campaign in our newspaper. This should have made your election campaign illegal. Mr. Pacheco, I wish you had resolved the matter in its simplest form. Now the sword needs major surgery to abdicate. Please read the letter Mr. Malama and Mr. Stevens gave you. It explains why they did not attend the meeting that wasn't. Both of them have served us well and had Cadillac's best interests at heart. And a big plus, they owe nobody anything. Mr. Homer, you kind of led us down by not advising the council members who are going along with this sham that they were actually breaking the law. We citizens of Cadillac have a right to know any and all decisions, both in open and closed meetings. I ask you men and women on the council, where are your priorities? Mrs. Filkins, are you serving your friend and the good old boys or the Cadillac citizens? Maybe it's time to call in the Marines or someone with a higher power that's not afraid of their jobs to clean this sham up. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, at this time, then we'll close public comment. And then we need to approve the consent agenda. Actually, we have the agendas from the minutes of the regular meeting on April 21st and from the work session held on that same day, April 21st.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. And this evening, we have a community spotlight.
Yes, we do. Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, we have a community spotlight spotlighting the May National Bike Month and the Ride of Silence event. I believe there is someone here from that organization. Kami?
Yes.
If you could please advise us about the event and how people can get involved, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you for letting me take this opportunity to share this with the community. The Ride of Silence here in Cadillac, this is our sixth year actually being in Cadillac, and worldwide, it's been going on for the past 10 years. It came into existence in Texas after a friend was out biking with his buddies and one of his friends was hit by a car and killed. And out of the love and the concern for everyone's safety, he began this ride back in 2004. At that time, I believe 50 cities were involved in the ride around the country, and now there's over 372 cities countrywide in the United States. It's on all seven continents, and even in Antarctica had a ride last year. The people that were stationed there actually did an indoor spinning ride for the Ride of Silence. Here in Cadillac, last year, we had 55 riders. That's about how much we average every year. This ride is a free ride. Its only purpose is to bring awareness to cycling in our community, the safety of it, and of course, our legal right to share the road. It is a very slow ride. We follow around the lake on the bike path, so it's open to anyone of any biking ability, really. We make sure that everyone stays together. We have a police escort that follows us around to keep us as safe as we can, can be. We meet at the city pavilion at 6:30 PM. At that time, we'll have a brief ceremony, kind of explaining the ride in more detail, and we distribute armbands to those that ride. The people in our community that have been hit by a car while cycling or have lost a loved one to a bicycle accident receive red armbands, and everyone else will receive a black armband, and that is to be worn in memory of those that have been injured and killed and anywhere across the whole world cycling. The ride begins promptly at 7:00 PM. We leave from the Cadillac City Pavilion, follow around the bike path, around the lake, and it takes us approximately 40 minutes to complete the ride. Again, it's done in complete silence in a very slow procession. The only requirement, of course, major requirement, is helmets are mandatory to be worn during the ride. If you show up without a helmet, I'll bring, I always bring extra helmets. And then our lovely Zach from a bike shop always comes in, helps out with people that need help with helmets, and he kind of follows us in case there's a breakdown. Other than that, if you bring children, are always encouraged to come, but they need to make sure that, you know, that we need to make it as respectful as possible, so we need to, you know, use your best judgment for that. Other than that, it starts at the pavilion, 6:30, ride leaves at 7:00. Helmets are mandatory, and it's open to anybody that would like to come out and support the cyclists in our community.
Is there a website or a phone?
Yes, theridofsilence.org. You can find way more details about it there.
Give us the date again?
It's May 21st, Wednesday, May 21st. It's always the third Wednesday of May, which, as Mr. Marcus said, it's National Bike Awareness Month, so that's why they have it in May. And that's it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sandy, we have a communication this evening?
Yes, there's a request from Jennifer Weaver for street closure on East Brummer between North Park and Nelson on June 7th from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM for a block party.
Sounds like fun. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I have a question. A question and a clarification that's needed. Brummer and Nelson are running parallel to each other, and so the street closure isn't, I don't think it can possibly be between Park and Nelson because they go like this. So is it?
It would be North Park Street that's closed.
North Park.
Yeah. Between.
So Park is closed between?
It would be North Park that would be closed. Brummer and Nelson run this way. Park is this way.
I was gonna say, Nelson is the cross street, and the street that would be closed would be North Park Street.
Is Jennifer here? Because it could be the 400 block of Brummer that she wants closed.
Sandy, do you have any?
I just have what's in the packet. It says 4th Block of East Brummer.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. The 4th Block of East Brummer, which would be between Park and... Why don't we just have a motion to close the 4th Block of East Brummer?
It says, "Close street between Cross Street, North Park."
Yeah, that's closing Brummer between Park and whatever the next street is, but the next street is not Nelson because they run parallel to each other. And I can't see what it is on this map. I used to live in that neighborhood. That's why it stood out to me.
What's the address?
If I could clarify, I would, but unfortunately, I can't tell on the map either.
What's the street that's east of Park Street?
Hemlock?
Hemlock?
The very end of Brummer is that?
It's weird there, isn't it, when it kind of curves?
Yep. And you have Park and North Park.
Can't we just say the 400 block of Brummer?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to request the closure, to approve the closure of the 400 block of East Brummer Street on June 7th from 4:00 PM
To midnight.
To midnight for a block party.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
What happens if that's not what she meant?
We'd have to come back.
We'd have to come back? Okay. All right.
Okay, at this time, we have introduction of ordinances and resolutions, Sandy.
Actually, Mayor and members of council, I'll just introduce this first one.
Okay.
The first item is the introduction of an ordinance to consider the adoption of a General Appropriations Act for our upcoming fiscal year 2015. The action being requested this evening is to set the public hearing for May 19, 2014.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for May 19, 2014, to consider approval of the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2015.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Under the adoption of ordinances and resolutions, we do have one item this evening. I'm actually very excited to bring this to everybody's attention. Also, I wanted to point out that Mike Hamner is here representing Avon Protection in our audience this evening as well. Avon Protection is in the process of going through some, bringing some new business into their Cadillac facility. As part of that discussion, that tickled the conversation with the Michigan Department of Transportation with respect to a Category A grant. That then led to further communication between Mr. Hamner, the Chamber of Commerce, and the city with respect to perhaps putting in for a grant to redo some of the streets in the vicinity of Avon Protection. The city, while we don't have the grant yet, is required to receive a resolution of support by city council as a part of the grant process. Additionally, there is a local match provision. In conversations with Mike Hamner, he has also reached out to a few other industries that could potentially benefit, one being Avon and the other being Rex Air and also AAR, who have all actually stepped forward with the local match dollars that potentially could be necessary, therefore making this an opportunity for the city and the industries to partner up in a public-private partnership that would not necessarily cost the city actual financial dollars. Certainly will be providing the engineering for the project, but the necessity of coming forward with dollars for that local match provision is going to be taken care of by the industries should this grant be awarded. And so this is really just an amazing opportunity, showing really strong public-private partnership, one that I'm very excited to recommend to city council this evening to support with respect to the resolution of support. And hopefully, we'll get the project rolling and we'll be able to be awarded the grant funds and get it in place.
That's great.
If you had anything you wanted to add?
I just want to say, I would appreciate the support. It is a resurfacing and rebuilding project of two roads and not the industrial park, but 7th Avenue and 4th Street. I don't know if you've been in that area, but the road's 40 years old, and AAR, Avon Auto, Avon Protection, and Rex Air have all kind of put in the 20% requirement for the work to be done. So as Marcus said, it's nice the state reached out to us and said these funds were available, so we're eager to try to get it done. So we appreciate the council support.
Thank you.
What's the approximate amount of the grant?
Well, we don't know yet. We're thinking, Bruce, was it 250?
Not 215 was about the...
215?
The moving target, huh?
Yeah, until the application's filed and we actually get a response back, we're not going to know for sure.
Right.
This is the, I know that we've had some of these before, but this is the first time I've seen it where the manufacturers have come together like this to help on the local match. So as you're thanking us, we should be thanking all of you for doing this. This is exciting. And I know the neighbors around there especially will appreciate and the workers for the company. But with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution that's before us, which will support the Michigan Department of Transportation Economic Development Category A program funding as presented.
Thank you.
Support.
Okay. Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Okay. The next thing that we have on the agenda is an open meeting for a FOIA appeal. Marcus, can I turn that to you?
Yes. At this time, and I'm looking, I don't know if Mr. Richardson is here or not.
I don't see him.
We do have on our agenda a Freedom of Information Act appeal that was requested accordingly by Mr. Richardson. Accordingly, it's on our agenda this evening. The appeal came in last week. This is an appeal that he had put forward requesting closed session meeting minutes pertaining to Blackburn investigation, 42114 and 4714. If the person making the appeal was here, at this point, we would provide an opportunity for them to address the council, given that I do not see Mr. Richardson in attendance this evening. I'm going to ask the city attorney to provide his brief on this at this moment.
The Open Meetings Act requires the city council to, or maintain a separate set of minutes, one for open session, one for closed sessions, if you have them. The FOIA request here is for the copies of closed session meeting minutes. Even if the city council wanted to, you are precluded by MCL 15.267 from turning over those minutes. Subsection 2 of that section says that minutes shall be retained by the clerk of the public body, are not available to the public, and shall only be disclosed if required by a civil action filed under Section 10, 11, or 13. That would require court order. To my knowledge, there has been no court order, and you are precluded from turning those over.
So the motion this evening would be to deny the request?
Deny the appeal. That is correct.
Okay. Would someone like to make that motion?
I have, I have a question. His appeal also requested that Mayor Filkins not vote on this because of a conflict of interest. Can you address that, please?
Sure. The request for documents pursuant to FOIA is a request for public records, not an opportunity to pose questions to the public body. So that portion is not proper in terms of the initial FOIA request and the denial.
Okay. I'll make a motion to deny the appeal by Louis Richardson regarding his FOIA request for closed session minutes, based on the reasons that Mr. Homier stated. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Can we hold off just a moment, please?
Sorry about that. I did want to make sure, I think from his request to make it clear to him that even if we had them, they wouldn't be available. But I do think that we need to take this in light with the other areas of the Open Meetings Act and make sure going forward, we start having minutes that we approve from closed sessions. Like, I really strongly feel that we're supposed to under the Open Meetings Act. Regardless, if we had them, he wouldn't be able to get them. But I think that we need to start doing that. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't.
Thank you.
Good point.
Now, could we have the roll call, Sandy?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
So can we talk a little bit about that, how we would approve minutes of closed sessions?
Yeah, there's some split of authority amongst attorneys whether or not closed session minutes have to be approved or not. We tend to err on the more conservative side, saying that if you have a meeting and minutes are taken, which are required of closed sessions, then you should approve those minutes. The process would be, is typically with our clients, they typically have sealed envelopes in front of them with closed session minutes. Those closed session minutes then are reviewed by council during the open session. However, you're precluded from discussing the contents of those minutes.
And then they get turned back in?
And then they get turned back in. If there are, however, corrections that are necessary, then you can adjourn to closed session to discuss the corrections to those minutes, at which time then you would come back out of closed session, and in the open session, a motion to approve the closed session minutes as amended would be appropriate.
Sheesh.
Yeah, it's a cumbersome process.
Well, and I've had some discussions this week, and I understand that it is a cumbersome process, but my feeling is if there is concern in the community and there is concern amongst the council that we need to be more conservative in our approach, then I would like to see us consider that. And my understanding is we haven't done that for the last 15 or 20 or however many years it's been, but I would like us to think about implementing that as part of our procedure.
I think the Open Meetings Act's very clear. It says to keep them for one year, the minutes, one year and one day after approval. I don't see how, I mean, I think it would be a very conservative interpretation to say we don't have to do it. Other governments are, our Civil Service Board does it, and I think that it would just be a step that we need to start doing without question.
It's a good idea.
I concur with that, too.
Sherri, how do you feel about that?
I, I'm okay with that. I think to make it as less cumbersome as possible, we could make an effort to reduce the number of times we go into closed session.
I think that's a great idea myself.
That's a good idea. Okay.
Is that our next time?
Okay.
That makes sense.
I think we can go ahead with the roll call now, Sandy.
We already did it.
Did we?
Oh, yeah, we did.
I was so excited that we just made some progress.
You could do it twice.
We did. We had the discussion after.
We did, okay.
That's true.
All right.
Where are we?
Okay, we are at the point where we need to just see that we have the minutes of boards and commissions, several of them in the exact five different boards and commissions, just for our informational purposes. And then that brings us back to public comments, and this public comment session, again, would be limited to three minutes, but it's open to whatever it is that you would like to present to the council. I don't see that anybody has anything to bring, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to good of the order for this evening. And this evening, we will go ahead and start with council member Stevens.
Hey. All right. I wanted to bring up two things. One of them, I actually thought about asking to be on the agenda, but it was last minute, so I thought I would just tie it in with here. But first of all, I had an opportunity in Lansing last week by total coincidence with the Attorney General Schuetti. He presented at the Michigan School Safety and Bullying Prevention Summit. He actually, I was able to go there, and who of all people? We had 20 students from Cadillac. We had the superintendent from Cadillac, the administrators, Tom and PK Harrison from Cadillac, our past superintendent, Paul Libinow. And it's part of the, it's okay to say hotline for students that will allow them, starting in September, it's a statewide initiative where they can call in or text this hotline if they know of bullying that's taking place or other violent crimes that they know of, where it's all confidential. And just thought it'd be interesting to let the public know. Paul Libinow was instrumental in this, and he also gave recognition to the city of Cadillac Schools, CAPS, because they were all set to do a pilot for it, and the legislator, legislation came forward faster than they thought, and it was approved to go forward with the plan. So I thought it was pretty neat that Cadillac Schools, there was a plaque given to the superintendent on behalf of CAPS for their involvement. And something exciting that's going to be happening in the state that really started here, and as I mentioned, Tom and PK Harrison were there and have been instrumental in this process for the statewide. So wanted to mention that. Also, while I was in Lansing, another interesting conversation came up that had brought some concern to me. And I think before I bring that up, I wanted to mention, speaking of Schuetti, the same day and this weekend, his, a lot of his discussions are about... day and this weekend, his, a lot of his discussions are about the Constitution and how when you take an oath, you follow it, but that we, as council members, we, as the city, need to follow our city charter, which is our Constitution. At our last work session, it was brought up about the appropriations, and the discussion came up that maybe there's been some lax appropriations taking place, one of those being that we're 154% over our legal budget. And my point is, we, that means we're 54% over the legal budget without any appropriations. The charter is very specific that it's a council responsibility. I, I have some concerns. We have many grievances right now with the police department. We have the civil service action taking place, all of this done without any appropriations, and really done without the council's involvement. Now, my answer from the city manager has been, since we didn't act, it's kind of like osmosis that it's, it's allowed. I don't think that's the appropriate measure that, I think either way, we either have to make the appropriation or make a decision not to. With that, I also, as we know with the charter, it's very clear about land. Anything that involves land in our community, parks, recreation areas and such, it's extremely specific in multiple spots that the council's part of that action. Ironically, in, in Lansing, it became known to me, I'm disappointed I found out in Lansing, that the section between Harris Street that goes to the park, if you go north around Chestnut Street up to the boat launching area, that that's actually owned by MDOT. And that for four years, after talking to Ron Adams, who is the, for MDOT, he is the railroad property specialist, that they have been working through the city, trying to come up with some resolution about this property. I personally am disturbed that our council has not been part of this. And I've been notified that we are within months where this property could potentially go from the MDOT to MDNR to the Great Lakes Railroad to a private, private developer. And I'm concerned that we haven't been part of this process. And I know we could say there's going to be maybe some back that it's micromanaging, it's not council, but I think if anybody looks through the charter, you're going to find that it is our job. And I don't know if the motive is that this would go in the tax roll and bring in revenue, but I think that that takes a big chunk out of our park. I think that we immediately need to be involved. I don't know if there's any resolution to this. I've been also told currently, there's really no easement that's been found. There's been an effort to, to try to get an easement or to do something with, with it in the hands of MDOT before it goes forward. And part of this, the Great Lakes Central would do a land swap with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources in Clare, which ultimately, the end of the day, and I verified this, I wouldn't bring it up in a meeting if it wasn't, but unless there's some fast action, there's a possibility that section of the park could go into the private hands. And I'm, I'm hoping that we could, through our council, get updated immediately through Marcus and find out if there's anything that we can do to try to stop this before that takes place, but at least to give us an understanding of exactly what's going on with that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Is that okay? Did you say that it is owned by, it's not owned by the city, it's owned by?
The Michigan Department of Transportation.
So how would we be able to impact that if it's not ours? If it's part of the park and it's not, doesn't belong to us? I mean, that, it doesn't, it's not under the purview of the charter if it doesn't belong to us?
Well, this Ron Adams, who actually, I think he's been doing this over 20 years, says he's never had a problem like this with the municipality. They're trying to get us to either get an easement in place, to take some sort of action that could potentially at least allow some of that part to be used if it does transform into a private company.
Can I ask Marcus, just for some input from you, so that we can understand? I know that we, I overheard a conversation when we were in Lansing at the Michigan Municipal League Conference about this, and there was some, you know, discussion in that the railroad person was coming up here, but I guess I would like to better understand what's going on.
The, I believe it's the City of Clare has been trying now for quite some time to have a rails-to-trails type program put in place. In order for that program in Clare to go forward, as I understand it, the railroad, which is the Great Lakes Central Railroad, would need to essentially allow the conveyance of property in Clare to become, you know, their property to become a trail and no longer a railroad right-of-way. The railroad has said that they are interested in a land swap for allowing that process to happen. The land swap that they're interested in is the area the council member Stevens has denoted along Lake Street, basically between Harris and Pine Street, which is currently owned by the Michigan Department of Transportation. When we were in Lansing for the Capitol Conference, the president and CEO of the railroad happened to be at the same place that, that we had, that we were in, and had mentioned that he wanted to, to talk about it, to see where it was at. We had a meeting with him, myself, and members of my staff, to try to understand what the railroad is looking at doing, where the project is at. And essentially, the railroad has no interest in developing that property into anything other than just maintaining it as parkland. They do have an interest in trying to maintain the facility that's currently located at the corner of Pine and Lake Street, where they have transient engineering-type folks staying overnight from time to time. Otherwise, they'd have to find another, another location for that. Our, I shouldn't say our, the property that is currently held by MDOT is protected, as council member Stevens had mentioned about it being parkland. It can't, it can't be converted into something other than what it is, short of having whatever is required under the charter to, you're shaking, you're shaking your head no?
We don't, if we don't own it, it's not under.
No, but it's under the zone, it's protected under the zoning. It's, it's.
Well, and I didn't mean for this to be the place we discuss it, but I think, we need to get this.
It's, it's protected, it's protected under the zoning. The, Mr. Adams, the gentleman that you mentioned, actually came in for the first time just last week and met with our community development director, just to, to talk about the, the property itself, what the options are. The state is trying to sell the property. The state is trying to sell it, whether it's to the DNR, and when I say the state, I'm referring to MDOT. They're not simply looking at doing a swap, they're looking to try and acquire something for it. And so, you know, the, the area where this whole thing is right now is, MDOT is looking at transferring it to the DNR. In order to do that, they have to try to establish a value for it. Mr. Adams came in to meet with our Mr. Adams to try to understand the lay of the land with respect to the property, the fact that it would need to get appraised, to also understand that it is parkland currently, and that there is a position where the city would want to make sure that it's forever parkland. There's, there's, you're right. You know, there, there is no easement or lease language that we have, but that's something that both MDOT and the railroad is willing to grant. And so this is all in a state of flux currently. There's nothing that, that I'm aware of that's ready to come forward at this moment. Not to say that something may not come forward in the future if it's getting heated up with respect to where the railroad is in Clare, but I'm not sure if I'm helping clarify anything or if I just added more confusion to it.
So the DNR's interest in it is that they could purchase, purchase it with the DNR trust fund?
I don't know how they're going to purchase it. The DNR wants to, the DNR's interest in it is because it'll help convey the property to Clare to be a trail. So instead of being, you know, railroad right-of-way, it'll be a, a trail that'll connect to their trail system that they have down there already.
Oh.
So.
The DNR may, they may own it for 15 minutes and then do a land swap with the property in Clare. But I, regardless, I, this, it's been a four-year process. I think we need to be all included. There's another property with a bungalow by the library and some other property with the questions of a land swap, but I, I'm just concerned that it's been four years and we don't know anything about it. And I do think it's, at least from Mr. Adams, from Lansing, that it's more severe than, than we know.
So do you think it would be helpful to have Jerry and, and Marcus do some sort of a presentation here at a council meeting? Or?
The main thing, when I.
To answer your concerns or to catch us up?
They said within three months, this could be hap, this could be a three-month to six-month. And if we don't have some things in place before, I, I think that we need to.
If it's already zoned as parkland, though, it's, it's already protected.
Possibly, but.
I, I didn't hear in, in what Mr. Petra just explained to us, that anything's happening in the next three months, but.
I mean, I, I don't, I suppose it could be on a fast track. I mean, I didn't hear that either, but it's certainly possible. I don't want to sit here and say that nothing will come back in three months from now, but anything is possible. The way it was explained to me was that one of Senator Brewer's office got engaged around the time that we were all in Lansing, and that's what got things heated up again. And then it's, then it tends to die down again, and then it gets heated up again, and it dies down again. And I guess this has been a cycle going on for years. So I, I don't know if it's coming to fruition or not, but certainly if, if council would like, we could prepare some form of a, of a presentation that could summarize.
I think that that would be helpful, and, and as part of that summary, just understanding, I think it would be helpful for you to perhaps document your concerns, so that when they're preparing this presentation, that all of the questions are being answered in that presentation, so it can be complete, in a complete form when we hear it. Can you do that?
I'd like it to include how Senator's, Senator Brewer's office is involved in it and how that got it to the fast track, because if so, that would be the second time he's tossed us under the bus.
Yeah.
How long has the discussions been going on? Four years?
I couldn't tell you. It could be longer than that.
We just, we just find out.
I mean, have they been in and out of the city prior to the first time you mentioned? Have they been, you know, two years ago, or did they come up with some thought on it?
No, there was, there was a phone call that the city received a few years ago by a woman at MDOT, mentioning that there's, there's conversation going on with respect to a land swap for Clare and the trail and this property. We went forward and provided some information to them, some aerial, you know, pictures of what it looks like, and then it all went away. So.
So you had one contact and, and four, or two contacts?
One, one actual in-person meeting, that was last week. So. At least one that I, that I'm, that I was made aware of. I don't, I don't believe they had been here meeting with our staff prior to that, but I know there was a phone call about two years ago.
As, as part of the, the presentation, I think that if we could just have a historical look at the conversations that everyone is aware of have happened, how did we get to where we are today?
And I will say that where we are today really is no further down the pipe than where we were before.
Okay. Well, I would, obviously, there's some concern, so.
Now, it would be important for us to know, because I'm sure that's kind of, the community's going to have a lot of concern here.
Well, we're doing all this planning in the park right now with the pavilion and such, and this could be, this needs to be included in there.
Okay. Well, if, if we could do that, just so we don't belabor it here, but if we could, if you could get those questions and concerns, if anybody has them over to Marcus, so that they have everything they need to put that presentation, presentation together, that would be great.
But I, I also think that, I don't think folks should panic that it's going to be sold and there's going to be a development there, because it is zoned as park, and it first has to get through the planning commission and picture that happening. And then it has to get through us, even if it gets through the planning commission.
It sounds like that they just want to change ownership. The railroad wants to keep it undeveloped and keep that building there.
That's why I think we need to get more additional information.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Did you have anything else?
I'm sorry, no.
For the good of the order?
That was it.
All right.
You're full of it, Mr. Stevens.
Okay. We can then move to council member Malama.
Just a couple of things. May 13th, at the Career Technical Center, our Manufacturers Association is having a Career Expo, and that's May 13th. It'll be all day. This is our second one. We organized it with CTC last year, and it was very successful. And this one even looks like it's going to have more people involved. And the other thing is, is Issues Over Coffee will be May 14th. But I do not have a date. I mean, I have a date, but I don't have a place. Excuse me. So it will be notified in the newspaper, correct?
Yep.
And it'll be also on our web, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you. Council member Shippers?
I don't have a lot. I would like to comment that I got some, I was contacted by some folks. I understand there was an incident outside the escape on Saturday night, I believe it was, that someone was accosted, and the, the police and an ambulance was called, and that the, the perpetrator made statements about not liking black people or something to that effect, and then went on with other things. I'd also like to comment about some of the really hateful, hate-filled speak-outs lately since we agreed to close the street for the Pride event in, in the summer. I think it, it really, it made me sad, because so many years ago, you know, I was in a position of trying to head off hate in our community when the, when the neo-Nazis were really active in the community. And I saw that dissolve, and I saw there being civil discourse again, and, and I wasn't getting as many calls as I was about hate speech and about people desiring to hurt one another because of who they are, except until recently again. And I got to say, folks, it just breaks my heart. We still have a ways to go before we can say that we are a peaceful, loving community, and that we are open to accepting all people in our community. People with gifts, with handicaps, with differences, with different ethnic backgrounds, with, I, I just, it, I just have to say, I'm, I'm very disappointed in my community for that. There's also been so much vitriol and, and anguish spewed toward the mayor and toward the, the commission, the, the council, and with regard to dealing with issues that are very important to our community. And we've been charged to make decisions here and try to figure out what's best for all of us. And the, just the assumption going in that there are secret and hidden agendas, and that there are just things under, that there's an undercurrent of dishonesty, is, is another thing that, that breaks my heart, and that I see people, there's a gossip mill that's just gone crazy. gone crazy. And it, it's harmful to us. Every time I come here, and not just here, but before I come, I hope and I pray for grace and wisdom in dealing with the issues that come forth. And when it's met with personal attacks and with, as I said, vitriol and hate, it just, we're better than that. We are better than that as a community. We need to start moving forward together. You know, we have been in dealing with issues for, since before I came on the city council, and we're still dealing with those same issues. And when things calm down, somebody stirs up the pot, and this is harmful to us. It's time for us to start moving forward together and come to a reconciliation in this season of beginning, you know, in the season of spring, when everything is starting fresh and anew. And, you know, it's like, I understand that birth and change is messy, and it's not without pain, but it brings new things and new opportunity. And if we are constantly trying to prove that somebody was right and somebody was wrong, or that this is this back then and that back then, we are never going to be able to move forward as a community, ever. We're going to just spend our time spinning our wheels and beating up on each other. And that's, that's not okay. That's not okay with me. I call on everybody, each of us, all of us, to just pray for wisdom and grace as we move ahead together as a community. Can we all do that, please? Thanks.
I have to go after that. I only have one thing, and it's related to the ride around the lake that Kami Wade brought forward in the community spotlight. And, you know, it's a reminder for us as motorists to share the road with bicyclers and with walkers, and give them, you know, what they need, slow down. It's that time of year when everybody's getting out finally. It's been a really long winter, so I would encourage you all to, you know, just slow that big, hard vehicle that would make a lot of damage if it hit an individual walking or somebody on a bicycle. Slow down and give them some space. Thank you.
Mr. Petcha?
Just a quick reminder that the run water order ended effective May 1. So, you no longer need to run your water. The billing will continue to be adjusted, and you will see adjustments on your June bill as well. It's being, the credits are being done in arrears. Additionally, just another reminder that the Volunteer or Cleanup the Parks Day was pushed back to Saturday, May 17th. We do have forms available here at City Hall, should you wish to come in and indicate where you might like to volunteer in our various areas. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to talk about the Parks Cleanup Day also. Weather's going to be fabulous that day, and we're going to move the picnic, Tara's moving the picnic down to the pavilion this year, rather than all the way out at Kenwood Park. And we thought it'd be more centrally located, so we're excited about those changes. And so, the more the merrier. If you've never done it, it's really just a dynamic morning of, you know, fellowship and hard work and good conversation. So, I'd like to see everybody out there with us. This past week, I had the opportunity to visit the Career Tech Center. And Dave Cox, who is the director, and Charlie Schwartz, who is the principal, and Jeff Janutt, who is the superintendent out there, we had lunch, and they took me through the facility. And I've been there before, but I have to tell you that it is amazing what is going on out on 13th Street here in Cadillac. The kids that are there, there's tremendous amount of creativity, pride, and talent. And if you ever have a chance to check out what's going on out there, they have a greenhouse out back in their horticulture program. You can go out there, you can order flowers, you can buy your plants, you know, you can be a part of sharing in what these kids are doing. Go out there for lunch, and they love to talk about what they're doing here, when they have the opportunity to go present in Lansing, and even with Mr. Malama's job career expo that they're putting on out there. They're excited about those things. So, I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed that. And that's all of the updates that I had. And thank you very much for the comments that you shared this evening. Okay, so at this time, we are going to go into closed session. And Mr. Petcha or Mr. Homier, can you read the...
The...
The motion that we need to make here, please?
The motion this evening would be a request to adjourn to closed session to discuss trial or settlement strategy in connection with the case of William S. Barnett in his capacity as mayor of the city of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn. The case number is 11-23578-CZ, and also the Michigan Court of Appeals docket number 312803. Additionally, to discuss the Blake R. Meyer v. Civil Service Commission of the city of Cadillac, case number 14-25152, and to discuss confidential legal opinions with the city attorney. As a part of that, I'd also like to invite our finance director and public works and engineering director, Owen Robert Simberstewitt, accordingly.
For, they're coming in for...
For just one of the legal opinions, then they'll be excused.
I mean, I don't know if, why, like, on these written confidential legal opinions, can we put a little bit more that clarifies what they are?
I don't believe so, Councilmember Stevens, but I would operate that that could be addressed by the city attorney.
Because I know I've been addressing, wanting to address the concerns that have been brought up about the Open Meetings Act. Is this one of those? Are we not doing that? Is this what that, one of those legal opinions is? Why we can't say if it is? I mean, I don't understand that.
I don't know how to answer the question publicly. I'm being honest with you, otherwise...
I mean, I've been, for weeks, trying to get, can we at least have a discussion for the council on this? Is this one of them that we're discussing on the Open Meetings Acts and the request by the paper to resolve their concerns? Is this going to be addressed in tonight, or we're not planning on talking about that?
Well, one of the legal opinions has to do with allegations that were made regarding the Open Meetings Act.
And we, do we feel that it's not appropriate, as we list our legal opinions, to say what they are?
Well, it depends how far down that road you go, because the very nature of the subject matter is subject to attorney-client privilege. So, without counsel being asked to consistently waive that attorney-client privilege, which I have never recommended to my clients, you are giving away by its very nature the subject matter, which is the subject of attorney-client written communication. The council at any time has the authority to waive privilege as a group. There are certain inherent risks that come with that.
Sounds like my question, that we are, we are going to kind of discuss that included as to that concern about the, the concerns brought to us by the newspaper, so that we can address that or determine how we're proceeding?
I think I've answered the question, I'm not saying anymore, unless the council wants to waive privilege.
No. I have another, I have another question for you, Mr. Homier. There's been people saying that with regards to the Blackburn case, that Mayor Philkins has a conflict of interest. Can you address that, that whether or not you feel she has a conflict of interest and why? Or no?
It's a tricky question, because I've given the city my legal opinion on that issue, and so I can't disclose it to the public without the council waiving privilege. However, I will note that the charter has a provision that prevents members of the council voting on issues in which they have a conflict of interest. Notwithstanding that provision, there's another provision under the charter, which allows any member of council to request an excusal from voting on any issue that they determine that they have either a conflict of interest or some other interests that would not allow them to vote on the issue. So, there's a procedure under the charter in which any member of council can say, notwithstanding the fact that I may or may not have a conflict of interest, in conflicts of interest, the member cannot vote. But in any other instance, a member can request an excusal from voting on an issue if the remaining members of the council unanimously agree. So, it's broader, the request to recuse yourself from a vote is broader than just conflict of interest. In a conflict of interest situation, there is a mandatory requirement that you not vote on that issue. But on other issues in which you may not have a conflict of interest, you can still recuse yourself from voting if you obtain the unanimous consent of the remaining members of council.
Thank you.
Well, I'm hoping, from what you said, that the open meetings discussion that I had addressed is being addressed in our closed session, which is ironic in itself.
Well, unfortunately, I don't hold the privilege. I have a duty to my client, that is, the city council has a collective body, not one individual member. Collectively, the city council has, or holds the privilege, which means only the city council can waive the attorney-client privilege. Again, I don't recommend it, because it has unintended consequences.
Okay, let me try this again. So, Marcus, the concerns that I addressed to you in your discussions with Mike, are we discussing them in the closed session?
Councilmember, I think we're in the same position. Even if I were to address the question that you're answering, it would require a board of council first.
I think I've already answered the question with respect to the subject matter.
Okay, then that means we are, okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Someone needs to make the motion, please?
I will. I'll make a motion to go into closed session as stated.
Do we have a support? Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Do you return to open session?
I'll make that motion.
Support?
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. And Mr. Petcha? Could you give us an update?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. With respect to the case of William S. Barnett in his capacity as mayor of the city of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn, case number 11-23578-CZ, and the Michigan Court of, and the Michigan Court of Appeals docket number 312803. I can advise as publicly that, as council knows, this is a very complicated matter. We are, council is definitely working very hard, and certainly will make its decision in due course and in due time on this, but there's nothing further for me to report this evening.
Okay. So, at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting.